There anyone that would like to make any public comments? Speak now or forever hold your peace.
Or at least till the end?
At least till the end, right? Okay, there's no, no one stepping forward. So we're going to get to the mental health report in just a minute, but I figured I'd do board member updates because I don't know how many there are. Does anyone have one from their committee? Les?
I do not.
Andrea?
I have a whole list.
Okay.
Okay, let's see. So usually I do rec department and PTA. For the PTA, I'm going to remind everybody that Halloween Town, which is our trunk-or-treating and haunted maze event, is going to be at Marston on Saturday, October 21st from 5:30 to 8:00. And they wanted me to make sure and remind everyone that all three schools and the library are collecting candy. So if you would like to donate candy to the event, you can send it into school with your child with strict instructions to put it in the box and not eat it or share it with their friends. And if your kids aren't in the school, you can always drop it off. There's a box, a collection box at the library. For PTA, I mean for the rec department, while we're talking about Halloween trick-or-treating, is October 31st from 5:30 to 8:00. They have some very cool camps going on for school-age kids and an early childhood music class that is just getting started. So you can contact rec to sign up for that. And last but not least, just for anybody who hasn't heard about it, the fire department is having their open house on Saturday, October 29th. They have that every year to celebrate Fire Prevention Month. And so that's Saturday, the 29th from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and that is a family event.
Thank you, Wendy.
You're welcome.
Great. Now we will have a presentation by the mental health team, probably one of the busiest teams we have. So we welcome your presentation. I would also ask you, when you come up, is please introduce yourself because not everyone knows exactly who you guys are.
Sure. All right. I am Stacy Picard. I am the school psychologist at Marston, and I am here to introduce the mental health team. Tonight's presentation is about what our roles are, what we do in our buildings, and the skills and the strategies that we teach within our buildings to help support students' social and emotional needs.
Hi, I'm Jen Landman. I'm the school psychologist here at Hampton Academy. It's nice to see all of you tonight. I'm here to introduce everybody. Center School, we have Samantha Connell. We have, who's the school counselor? Michaela Kylie, who's a school psychologist. At Marston School, we have Emily Whitney, which is a school counselor. Stacy Picard is school psychologist. At Hampton Academy, we have Angela Bowen, school counselor. And we have Amanda Tamburelli, school counselor, and myself, school psychologist. We also have Emily Fixler, who is our school social worker. And so I'm just going to go over our roles and how they're similar in many ways and also different. So jointly, we as a team all identify student needs within our buildings. We collaborate with families, staff, and teachers to help support our students. And we all provide some level on the tiers 1, 2, 3 of social and emotional interventions and crisis interventions. Independently or individually, the counselors do all the registrations for their buildings. They do counseling supports for Tier 1 and Tier 2, and in some cases, Tier 3. They are the 504 coordinators for their buildings, and they also push into classrooms to teach lessons for social and emotional health. The psychologists, we do all psychoeducational evaluations in the district. We do mostly Tier 2 and Tier 3. And in this district, Tier 3 is special ed counseling for groups and individuals. And we provide interventions and consult as well with teaching staff. Emily, who is our social worker, she is more of a global support. She connects the school and the community. She is pinnacle in making sure that we reach out to our resources in this community and outside to help support our students. She is also the McKinney-Vento liaison, and she also does referrals to outside agencies when our students need that support.
Hi, Emily Whitney, school counselor at Marston. We want to just highlight some of the ways that we are addressing student needs across the district. As you know, we have many roles and hats that we do as school counselors, school psychologists, and social workers. So some of the ways that we are addressing the many student needs that we have is through our Seacoast Mental Health Center partnership, parent and student support. And we have therapists that come into each school to work with kids individually and groups. We have our Seacoast Cares Team and Tipline Collaboration with SAU21, Seacoast Wraparound with local agencies, and that meets monthly. Our suicide prevention protocols and our collaboration with Connor's Climb. We do that at a parent, student, and staff level training. We also distribute teacher assessment of student needs using our Sabers Tool. That is a new tool that we're using this year. So we're really excited to see how that rolls out. Outside consultation with Susan Antico, the former school counselor at Marston. Zones of Regulation programming across the district, as well as our Oveius Bully Prevention Program across the district. PBIS being used at Hampton Academy. Responsive Classroom, including morning meeting and advisory. And then Teach Town Curriculum at Center School. So to touch on some of the guiding principles of responsive classroom, this is a curriculum and concept that is used throughout the district. The first one is teaching social and emotional skills is as important as teaching academic content. So that's really all that responsive classroom is about. Number two, how we teach is important as what we teach, right? So how we're teaching. Number three, great cognitive growth occurs through social interaction. Four, how we work together as adults to create a safe, joyful, and inclusive school environment is as important as our individual contribution. Number five, what we know and believe about our students individually, culturally, and developmentally informs our expectations, reactions, and attitudes about those students. And lastly, partnering with families. Knowing them and valuing their contributions is as important as knowing the children we teach. So as we go into a little more about responsive classroom, really keep those guiding principles in mind.
Hi, I'm Samantha Connell. I'm the school counselor at Center. So to continue on with responsive classroom, there are nine teaching practices. So when you come into any of our buildings, you might see morning meeting at Center and Marston, advisory here at the middle school. You can look around the classrooms. You might see, or you will see, on the walls, all of the classroom students and the teachers will establish classroom rules. You might see a class practicing an energizer. You might see a class that is having quiet time. At the end of the day, you might see a closing circle. So you'll see all of these practices happening throughout the day.
Good evening. I'm Amanda Tamburelli, school counselor at Hampton Academy. So just to extend what they're doing at the elementary schools to Hampton Academy, advisory is the natural next step in the progression from elementary school to middle school. As students move away from morning meetings, the same guiding principles evolve into the advisory model that is more developmentally appropriate for middle and high school students. So the Hampton Academy Advisory Program reflects the responsive classroom advisory principles, which are designed to address seven key purposes. Build student-to-student affiliation, energize and reengage, reflect and recalibrate, extend learning through themes, support academic readiness, strengthen advisor-advisory relationships, and develop communication and social skills development. On this slide, we also wanted to bring to your attention the One Trusted Adult book that the whole staff is reading at Hampton Academy as professional development and which we're discussing every month at our staff meeting. This book is just kind of putting, bringing home to us just the importance of having that one trusted adult in the building for each student, and that's kind of the goal of advisory. Our handbook states that advisory is a safe space in a non-academic setting that assists students in building relationships and community building with a trusted adult. Within the advisory program, there's a level of consistency of great appropriate activities and themes. At the end of last year, we took a survey of all the staff about, you know, how they felt advisory went, what were the strengths, what were the challenges. So we just put one quote, but it kind of was the resounding kind of message we heard from a lot of the staff. This quote says, "We bonded together. The sense of community was really good for the students. As the year progressed, the students opened up more, and new friendships were formed. The students knew they had a place where they felt safe, cared for, and could talk about sensitive issues." On this next slide, it's a little hard to see, but this is an example of a full-value contract, which every advisory creates together. The goal is to define and practice respectful behaviors with the group members during advisory. And the purpose of having students create that full-value contract is posted in every advisory room. And it's reminding students of the group norms that they've all agreed to and that they've developed together as a group so that everyone in that group feels physically and emotionally safe and respected at all times.
Good evening. I'm Angela Bowen. I'm one of the school counselors at Hampton Academy. And just to further support some of those pro-social behaviors from the Oveius Bully Prevention Model, it's being implemented in our district. And there's a variety of activities to support the intent of this program throughout the year. So just take a moment and just take a moment and just read the four rules about bullying. These are being implemented across the district in all three of the schools. You'll see them posted in all of the classrooms. So I just want to call your attention to the first slide that states we will not bully others. The three remaining rules encourage pro-social behaviors, and those are those activities that they are doing in advisory and responsive classroom to help encourage cooperation, all of those good outcomes of students. So Michaela is now going to share more activities that our students will participate in during the school year.
Hi, I'm Michaela Kylie. I'm a school psychologist at Center. So this slide looks at, it lists a ton of ways that we are sort of embedding our bully prevention curriculum into everyday life. And also, as Ms. Bowen pointed out, there's two bullying prevention, those posters right here. So you'll see them, you know, just proof that they're here and being used as well. So like Ms. Bowen said, each of the three schools are using those core bullying rules, exactly the same language in all three schools, the same posters even. And each building sort of approaches bullying prevention from those core rules and applying activities in a way that is appropriate for the age group of the students. So all of the schools do start off with some sort of kickoff, whether that be a school-wide celebration of kindness, whether it be classroom-based or grade-level. The older students will go into more of the specific and more nuanced and sophisticated topics, like in their health classes, talks about cyberbullying with their suicide prevention programming and curriculum. And the younger students will read books and do activities with teachers or in small groups that talk about bullying and bullying prevention and those pro-social behaviors that we want to see them doing if they happen to be in a situation that involves bullying. Another thing that is really helpful for our students is that we also unite the grade levels by having older students come visit the younger students' schools and read books to them about the topic of bullying and also be sort of symbols of good role models in our schools.
Hi, Emily Fixler, district social worker. A big part of our job is communication with families, and we do this on a daily, weekly, and monthly basis. We also, as you can see, have a, and in front of you too, there's a mental health provider referral list as well as a Hampton area resource list that we share with families and encourage them to seek out outside supports and services when they need it. And we're also happy to partner with those families in that process. There's also a very detailed SAU90 School Counselor website with many activities and links that families can access. And then 988 is the National Mental Health Emergency Line that's available 24/7 for families. Yep, and that's the last slide. So thank you for having us, and we'll take questions now as well.
Thank you. Questions, Mr. Shepherd?
Yeah, if we could, can't remember your name with the glasses. Could you come up and we can put your slide back up?
Sure.
Okay. Nope, there it is. Of those bullet points, how many of those are new this year?
I don't think any of them. I think...
The Trusted Adult is new. The book is new. Yeah.
So we can go through them one by one if it's easier.
I believe other than the Trusted Adult book. So if you have specific questions about that since at the academy, the rest of them are all...
Ongoing.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, Les?
No, I...
Andrea? Any questions? Wendy?
That was a great presentation. Thanks, guys.
Is the One Trusted Adult only being read by middle school teachers? Isn't, I thought it was SAUI. Why? Why? What is the reason?
I think Nate, Mr. Sadler.
Yes, Mr. Sadler, go ahead.
Can't speak for their team, I'm not on it. Last year, we had some staff who read One Trusted Adult and at the New Hampshire Principals Conference listened to Brooklyn Rainey present, which is why we started our student-led mentor program last year. So it's a continuation this year, but we did that small presentation last year with a video. So not everyone on our staff has read One Trusted Adult, although some people heard about it and picked it up independently. But it wasn't like a formalized staff read. But that's how we started the student mentoring program last year. That will continue again this year. So they'd have more than One Trusted Adult at the school outside of their classroom teacher.
Thank you. Mr. Lannan, would you like to explain why Center School is not reading One Trusted Adult? Okay, thank you. Moving on, thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
We weren't instructed to do it, is that what you said? Okay. Sam, would you just come up to the microphone?
Sure. So we focus too, when we teach about trusted adults at Center, that any adult is a trusted adult at Center. It's not like, I think they focus more on like, these specifics can help you, and we really do it as like a broad, everyone is a trusted adult here, as opposed to like more of, this is your advisory crew, this is who you really can go to when you have the, you know, any questions or concerns or anything.
Okay. So it's basically age and developmentally where your kids are?
Yes, I would say that.
Okay.
It is, it is more grade 6 through 12 for One Trusted Adult, just to clarify. I know that we as a leadership team, and also during our goals meeting, and Frank DeLuca sat on that meeting, when we broke down our goals, one of the things that we specifically spoke about was, to your point, Les, was what's new. And I think that's the question that we've been asking ourselves. And if we want change, we got to do some, we have to make change. So I think when you see the goals, the district goals you're going to see shortly, you're going to see in green what we've highlighted that is new. I think that one of the things that we talked about is that during COVID, I think that Oveius truthfully has fallen off the radar and for two reasons. And Sue Antico, who I'm staring at, knows that, that several years ago, we, if we were going to continue implementing the program, there were costs involved, and please correct me if I am wrong, and the former, yeah, please, if you want to come up. And there was a decision made to do, to implement a little differently. So can you speak to that, if you would?
Hi. With the Bully Prevention Program, that was begun by the former superintendent X amount of years ago. I think it was her second year serving as superintendent. One of the things that we really needed to look at at the time was we had the responsive classroom approach, K5. And at the time, the former principal at the academy was working towards the PBIS model and really shoring that up. So that Oveius didn't happen immediately there. Then what also came about over time, you're absolutely right. The cost is enormous, and we had received a grant well, close to $30,000. I don't know how she got the grant, but we had that grant money. One of the pieces of, if you're looking at that comprehensive program, is a student survey. When they brought in that law of opting in, remember the parents have to sign, one of the things that Oveius through Hazleton, because they take care of it all, is you cannot share the survey prior to giving it because it could contaminate the results. If a parent sees it in the questions, and the parent may say, "Don't answer that." So that became a point where we had to say, okay, we need to pull back on that. The other thing too, is that Center School has done a remarkable job because when you look at the program, it's a 312 program. It does, it is not designed for the lower level. And then, several years after that, we brought in New Hampshire Listens. And so the focal point became the equity and addressing that, where in honesty, the Oveius program didn't, hadn't caught up to that yet, and it still hasn't. So there was a lot of different factors that came into play, and then COVID hit. So the implementation of it, it wasn't done with fidelity because the kids weren't in front of us, and it wasn't something you could do virtually. Does that make sense? I went like...
It makes sense, Sue. What do you see as probably the most pressing need for the mental health team and for the mental health of our students and staff? Can you think of one?
Globally, you mean?
I mean, in Hampton, to make sure that the students and staff get what they need, what is, is there a pressing need that you don't have at this point that you need?
I think what we're, I'm not sure I can answer as far as the need is concerned, but I think that emphasis and that response to what we're using that lingo here as far as a trusted adult, I think what really happened as a result of the pandemic was we lost connections. We lost connections as students, and we lost connections as adults. I can remember like feeling so alone, even though we were operating virtually and hybrid. There was, there was, we lost that, and we need to rebuild it at the staff level and at the student level. And I think this mental health team is addressing that. And we're addressing it through the pro-social strategies that we use and we continue to build on. And I think we, we want to be as, one of the things I've even talked to the administrators about is that we have to find balance, and we have to be very realistic. The students that they're now working with directly is not the students I worked with even three years ago. They're not, nor there is the staff, you know? We have to, and we also have to remember, our jobs is to promote academic success. They're not, you know, and I was never a therapist-therapist, and we have to keep that balance. So we have to think about those things that really will promote academic success, and research shows. If the kids feel like they're heard, they belong, they feel significant, and they have that adult, whoever that adult may be in that class, in that school, they're going to come, and they're going to be successful. So I think that's where we're...
Disagree.
Would you, would you also say that one of the pieces that we're dealing with, and maybe as a result of the pandemic, maybe it's a result of just the world right now, is dysregulation? And that...
Most definitely.
Yeah, we're, what we're seeing is an increase in dysregulation, and it's with our students, and at times, it's with adults. And I think that we're really striving to make these be safe places where kids who, and adults who need help can access it and making sure they know where to go to get it. I think that's the other piece we're trying to do. And re-establishing those connections with our families, re-establishing connections with our children, and re-establishing connections with each other is really going to be important. We have noticed a decline in PTAs. We've noticed a decline in our turnout for anything that we do. The numbers aren't there like they were. I think our parents and families are very busy, and I think that it's all they can do, right? Just to...
The stresses of living.
Yep.
The cost of food, the cost of housing, the cost of daily living and dealing with your students and working eight to 10 hours a day and coming home. That leaves a lot of parents stressed.
Yep.
They don't need, they can't think of one more thing to do.
Right. And I think what's really, the thing that we can convey is you do. You have those stresses, and we, if the school can't help that, except like obviously through free and reduced and however we can help feed our children while they're, they're in the schools. But we're going to take care of your kids. We're going to educate them while they're with us. And they're going to be in, in our home at the, at the district level and, and trust us. And we're doing a really good job, and we're working very hard. You know, every staff member in these buildings, you know, and when I, there is the mental health team, but there's also the educators. And I mean, I think you have people very devoted and dedicated, and, you know, we recognize it, and you're absolutely right.
Okay, thank you, Sue.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you to the mental health team.
Yes. It is National Mental Health State.
Yes, it is National Mental Health.
I think, I think, I think, can I, if I just can just throw out a statistic, it's not to alarm you, but just to enlighten you. You know, sadly, you know now that, that we now have the 988 hotline, and it's on, the number's on the back of our student ID cards for our middle school students. And, you know, we're very well aware of it. And, you know, you should be aware that there are many, there were many calls that were made last year. I do collect that data, more than we would like. And we, we had an evening where we do partner with Connor's Climb, which is right here in Exeter. And sadly, we just didn't, we just don't get the turnout. What we are doing is we are offering it. You probably saw it in my newsletter. You saw, it is on our counseling page. But I do think that in spite of, we know this is a real problem in our community, I think parents are just really busy to come out for even something that important, is what I would say. So we're trying to find a way to, how do we reconnect with our communities and families so that we can have the partnership, and they know that we're here for them.
And WMUR is doing a site on the homeless. And there's, they're featuring six people who are homeless now, and they never in their life thought they would be. And it's a great, I watched the first one last night, and it's going all week. But it gives you a little insight into what can happen in life, which is not always their fault. Thank you very much. Mr. Lannan, can we have your report? Mr. Lannan, can we have your report?
Good evening, everyone. I want to first off thank the mental health team. They did an excellent job. A lot of hard work went into that preparing for tonight's presentation. Just a couple of things I want to highlight on my board report and my newsletter. We had a fabulous open house, so well attended at the end of September. Want to thank the parents for coming out and, and joining us for that school event. We had a walk to school day. We had a beautiful Wednesday last week for a walk to school day that went extremely well. Kindergarten's going on a field trip tomorrow, so we're excited to send kindergarten off to Crescent Farms tomorrow for a field trip. Supposed to be another great day. We're preparing for our early release that's coming up on October 18th. We have a lot to do in the year of curriculum and social emotional learning. And the highlight of the month is our annual Halloween parade. That's going to be on Halloween on the 31st at 1:30. So that's a really big event. Safety continues to be a priority at the school. We've had multiple event, uh, safety drills. With that also each year that the schools need to submit an annual emergency response plan. And that's due this week. And part of that protocol, that's new, we started last year, is getting some signatures. If I may, this allows me to send my plan off to the state. I do need a school board chair and the superintendents. Could I have that signature, please? Thank you.
Of course. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me?
I don't think so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a great night.
Mr. Sadler?
Hello. So if you drove by Marston School tonight, it was packed. And we had a great open house going on. I had to leave early, obviously, to come here. But just great when we can get parents in, in the community into our schools and see the great work the kids are doing and learn a little more about the learning taking place. So that was a wonderful event. A few things going on later this month, it's usually around, we don't actually celebrate Red Ribbon Week, so to speak, at Marston. It's a little more middle school and high school. We talk a lot about making good choices. We'll have our Celebration of Kindness, which is, we used to call it the OVAUS kickoff. We noticed the more we talked about bullying, the more we heard about it. And so we've kind of re-geared it towards pro-social and positive behavior. So how do we interact with one another? How do we be kind and respectful and polite? So that's a big school-wide event that we have every year and looking forward to it again this month. Mentor groups, as I mentioned before, will start this month. So every staff member in our school, except for maybe the two people in the office, take a group of anywhere from six to eight students. And it's every single Wednesday, we meet for about a half hour. And again, as I mentioned before, it's, it's building connections throughout the school. They're very connected to their classroom teacher, sometimes integrated arts teachers and specialists if they get reading support or, or help with math or things like that. But the more connections kids can have at, at the school, the more people they feel comfortable talking to. There's a lot of positive benefits of that. And also for us, it's, it's about community building at Marston. So how do we build a greater community between students and staff? Homework Club is going to be beginning next week for after-school academic assistance for students who might need a little help with their homework or a little help with executive functioning skills or just staying on track and maybe aren't receiving the level of support that perhaps they need to be successful. So that takes place and you just reach out to your child's classroom teacher and they'll talk more about eligibility and stuff. And as Mr. Lannan mentioned, we have some field trips coming up this month as well. Fifth grade will be heading down to the Boston Tea Party Museum as part of their social studies curriculum. And fourth grade will be heading to the New Hampshire Farm Museum in Milton, which has a lot to do again with their social studies curriculum. Just a little plug and friendly reminder that parents do need to be fingerprinted to attend those. And if you could read some of the emails we sent out about that and also go on the website under Community Resources. There's, and step-by-step instructions for how to schedule an appointment with the SAU office to get that completed. But other than that, we're open to questions and just looking forward to another wonderful month.
Anyone have any questions?
I don't.
Okay, what's this book because of a teacher?
Ah, yes. So since I've been at Marston, we've always done a staff read. Last year it was Help for Billy, which was, we used to hear about it when we were doing the grow work with trauma-sensitive schools and really helping students who are struggling. Because of a teacher is slightly more inspirational. It's reminding teachers why we got into the field, why we stay in the field. So it's a collection of stories. Our first coffee chat is actually this week where we'll be sharing the first chapter and discussing it as a staff. We do it before school. It's on a volunteer basis. We provide the book for people. They read it over the summer. And then we engage in conversations over a cup of coffee about it. And this one really is, you know, just reminding people that our job is tough and we do it for a reason and kind of helping people re, re-get back to that why, you know, their direction or their focus. So I'm looking forward to it. We haven't had any yet this month, but have, you know, we can talk about it again next month if you'd like. But it's just, I think, a good inspirational read for our staff to help keep them kind of focused and remember that the days are tough, but in the long run, we're really benefiting a lot of people with the work we do. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Hawkins.
Good evening. Good evening. You have my report in front of you. You know, one of the biggest things, giant shout out to the cross-country team. Girls came back with a trophy after going over to Manchester and really proud of them. They were outside today, even with that rainstorm coming through. So just a great opportunity for, after school for a large group of kids. All of our sports teams are moving along. Again, we had 50 students sign up for volleyball and moved one of our assistant coaches down. So we could split up the, split up the group a little bit and coach some of the kids who will be moving up next year. And just really happy with the amount of kids who are getting some experiences after school. The, we had our environmental camp meeting. We had our DC trip meeting. We had our Quebec meeting. We had our Puerto Rico meeting this month. And as of now, everything's moving along very smoothly with environmental camp. The, we did a whole bunch of fundraising. We're still pulling those numbers together. So, but working with Ms. Fixler, with anybody who needs any assistance. So everything's moving along very nicely. We've got everybody, all the staff members are ready to go up. And hopefully we'll have some good weather for them, hopefully not too cold. Washington DC, the first thing that parents needed to do was sign up for the insurance. So we actually have a list of people who have signed up for insurance. And we have about 23 kids and we're going to be reaching out to parents directly who haven't signed up. Find out, A, if, you know, make sure that they know about the trip and fill them in about anything. Any, any other assistance, we can, we can fill in with that. So I think environmental camp, we have about five or six kids who have decided not to go. Different reasons, so. Our Quebec trip had 26 students show up. So there, that sign up is still ongoing. And our Puerto Rico trip had about 16 kids sign up when we were at the meeting. So again, those, those signups are still working their way through. So we'll have some more definitive numbers for you later on. Tonight was our Rotary Student of the Month was elected. So the Rotary moved their meetings from 7:30 in the morning to 6 o'clock at night on the second Tuesday. So Clive Newman was the, the student who has moved forward as the Hampton Academy Student of the Month for the Rotary. I just got a picture on my computer a few minutes ago and Ms. Wilcox joined him along with his family. So congratulations to Clive. He's a great kid. One last thing is our Ski Club meeting is going to be on the 17th. So it'll be running the five weeks after we get back from Christmas break. The one thing I think I forgot to put on my report, and it was a request of the board from last time, was about the, the bullying investigations or reports. And we didn't have any from last month. Any questions?
No, thank you very much.
No problem.
Oh.
I, I do, I do have one question. It's not, not really for you, but it was in your report.
Okay.
The, the secure campus.
Yes.
I got a couple of calls from people about that. I didn't, I didn't know what they were talking about. We weren't notified, or at least I wasn't.
Or email. The email you got.
I checked my email, I checked my spam.
Lois sent an email. I, I know I got an email that morning. I don't know, I don't know where yours was, but Lois did send one out to the board.
Then can you revisit with our technology person and see if we can get that sorted out?
Absolutely.
Because I'm not getting anything lately, nothing. Okay?
I'm sorry. I apologize.
You didn't get anything either, did you? No.
But you did?
Yeah.
All right. I'm, I'm happy to talk about it.
No, I know what it was all about.
You do, okay.
Figure that out fast.
Yep.
It's just a little disconcerting when you get a phone call from a parent and say, hey, what's going on? And you go, I don't know. So.
Yep, Amber and I would, I'm sorry.
I apologize. I wish it called me.
I also need to meet with Amber about, about another thing as far as New Hampshire School Boards Association. There's a whole new sign-on thing. So if you can run through it with me, I can probably get everybody else set up. That's it.
Apologize.
Thank you.
Hey. Lois on special ed. Ever increasing field as we know it.
Yes, for sure. Good evening. You do have my report. I just wanted to point out a couple of things with the numbers. So just, it doesn't, we did not lose an out-of-district placement. I just want to make note, it went from nine to eight, but it really just went, one of them is court ordered. So one of our out-of-district placement children moved into the court ordered, officially is court ordered. So that's, the numbers still stay the same, as you can see. We just keep going up and up and up with five move-ins.
Now, if you're court ordered, does that mean the district still has to pay?
So yeah, and that's why the category is on here because it's a little bit different. Yes, we still have to pay, but not quite as much. We can get reimbursed a little bit more if they are DCYF or court ordered. So in the end, we pay a little less, but we are still obligated to pay for the educational expenses of the child, even if they're DCEF placed somewhere in the state. But I did want to talk a little bit about the importance of professional development for adult learners. And that's kind of what I put in my report. So I do go monthly to a, a meeting. I'm also attending that year-long PD with Kim Marshall just to kind of dabble in supervision and evaluation and what we can look at in our district. And just to let you know that our Medicaid training has been held for almost all of our people. The Related Service will be having their training this month. But we are really rolling along and we've come a long way with Medicaid reimbursement and those, you know, bringing those revenues into the district. And I want to thank, you know, Kim Bryant and all the other people who work so hard to do that because it is a very cumbersome system, but it's a really important system. And we do reap some revenues from that. And you can see that referrals and move-ins have kept us very busy over the last month. One more thing just of note, there was a question about caseloads. So just to let the board know, our average caseloads in the district is 11. So that's the average. And the range ranges from anywhere from five to 16 per case manager. Just a little information. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Still, oh, Amber.
We've just had a busy month of helping teachers and staff and students get on all of our subscriptions we've had. We've had a lot of new registrations at all three schools, so we've been busy with that. I've also worked with Patrice Baker, who's our early childhood resource. And we now have a new website, webpage up on our Center School page for early childhood resources for the Seacoast area. So Patrice and I will be working on making that more readily available for those families who aren't quite hitting the preschool age. They're kind of, you know, under that, that zero to five range. I know they're working with the library, they're working with the rec department. Really trying to get a lot of great resources out there for our early childhood families out there. So that's about it for me.
Any questions for Amber? Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Mr. Assad?
Everyone. So I guess it would be proper if I didn't remind everybody that we're looking for staff. We, I believe we have, we'll be planning on adding one highly qualified candidate in the next couple of weeks, but we still have to open positions full-time. And that is from 2:00 to 10:00 at night. And it's a full benefits package. So anybody that's interested in applying can contact the SAU office. Applications are online under SAU 90. We've had a busy start to the school year. There's a lot of business use, a busy, busy time with people coming in and requesting use of the buildings after hours, which we're happy to fill, local events, HYA, cheerleading, et cetera, as we move into the winter. We're preparing for winter. It's not that far away. And we're getting ready to kick the heat on. It's funny how we're going from boiling temperatures to now we're getting cold in the morning and sun's going down quicker. I'm not telling anybody stuff that they don't already know. But, you know, as we're all in the winglanders, we're testing each other. Like, I can keep my heat off longer than you can. Anyways, with that said, I'd just like to take a couple of minutes and talk about the CIP, if that's okay at this point in time.
Which is on the agenda further down, so.
Oh, do you want me to come back?
No. No.
Okay.
Might as well do it now.
Okay, I didn't know when it would come, come up for me. So everybody pop your popcorn? And we'll get started. I think the most important thing to talk about is the ventilation system at Center School. And how we got to where we are now. Because we're, we're going to, we're going, we're still planning to do the $300,000 long-term maintenance warrant article. And Mariah has some information on that, but we're going to move forward to the, to the planning board with that part in the CIP. The second part of it is we're talking about the ventilation improvements over at Center School. And I think you've all been kept posted without a lot of details on how we got to where we're at. So before COVID, COVID, actually, I would say 20 years ago, we started working on the ventilation problems at Center School. But I'm going to fast forward to more recently, before COVID and the completion of this building, we started working on the ventilation improvements at Center School by including it in our CIP and our warrant article to develop a phased-in plan. Then we had the worldwide pandemic, which threw us for a loop. And so we were preparing the building to make sure it was safe to return to school with indoor air quality. After we completed all of that, we started working again back on continuing the major indoor ventilation, indoor air quality ventilation improvements for Center School. We applied for some ESER funds and they were granted to us. And our estimated cost at that time was $1.2 million. We received approximately $600,000 from the ESER grants that was awarded for improving indoor air quality at Center School. We moved forward to complete the design and prepare an RFP. And over that summer, it was very difficult to get qualified people to work on the project. So we knew we had enough time, so we did not work for it for that summer as we were preparing for the following summer to take it on at once, on the advice of engineering. So finally, we get our RFP, and we sent it out, and it came back surprisingly high. And we only got two bids. And we sent it out to over 10 qualified bidders that had the bandwidth to do our type of project and could do federally funded work. Federally funded grants create another layer of bureaucracy. And I'm not going to sound like a politician, but it does add costs and everything else onto the process of operating a business. So we started to work, the lowest bid was 1.6, and the second one was $2 million. So we prepared a second RFP to reduce the cost and to break the project into two phases. So we could fit the money we had on hand and complete one phase. That was our plan. Our qualified bidder was willing, so we sent those bids out, and we got back two bids from the same people with the same amount of money as a managed construction. So we chose the lower-priced one, a highly qualified bidder, and explained to them the amount of money we had and how we were funding the project, and if we were willing to hold on to the following year with us and do, complete the work the following year. So we went out for that bidding process. We talked with the bidder. We talked about how we can work together and to fund the process for the following year. And they agreed to had, if it would not pass, they wouldn't do the project. If it had passed, they would be the ones that were working with us. Meanwhile, we're working with our attorneys and the owners of the company and central office to negotiate how we would move forward. So we were ready to move forward with the Phase 1. We started to, now we're at the end of June. Now we're doing exploratory work so they can start running chases in the Center School. And then I reported a couple of meetings before that we discovered some hidden asbestos-containing materials that are in the way of the chases. Well-hidden from everybody, they're all behind materials. So this is where we all take a breath. Okay. So as we discovered the asbestos-containing materials, this opens a whole new process. So we're working with an industrial hygienist to develop an RFP to remove the asbestos-containing materials next summer. Our plan is to use the ESER funds to do the removal of the asbestos-containing materials. And then Mariah's going to talk about how we're probably going to have to go forward with a warrant article for probably close to $2 million to do the indoor air quality work for the ventilation system with the dehumidification. We are also working on, so you probably remember, two years ago, we asked for an extra $12,800 for a section for a boiler at Marston School in the 1996 edition. So we moved forward because it needed a section. They contacted the forging company, and we're waiting for the section to come in. Now we're waiting, now it's this summer, we're waiting for the section to come in. The boiler was reassembled, and they used some products to put it back together, but we have a cracked. We use a chemical called J-Weld adhesive that works, you know, in high-temperature environments to seal the crack. And so it's September, and I'm pushing our contractor, what are we doing? And he contacted the boiler manufacturer, only discover that they are discontinuing manufacturing boiling sections. So. Now they come forward and they're suggesting that we replace the boiler. And this is a section of the building that does not have redundancy. It was in 1996. I do not believe that our boiler is in hospice, but we do have to be prepared to replace it. Our replacement budgetary number is $260,000. And we're talking in central office about how we can get this work done sooner than later and be prepared should something happen. So that process we have talking about, because we have our CIP, that money, using that money to move forward and replacing the boiler at the 96 edition at Marston School. And that brings into, this is a real puzzle to make sure all the pieces fall together. I want everybody to know that all of the indoor quality equipment at Center School is still performing well that we hired for COVID. It is really not a long-term solution, but our air is being exchanged. It's being treated to remove viruses and bacteria from the air. I really don't know what else to say. I bring forward bad news. And none of us are happy about it. But we have to be prepared. Ready for questions? I don't know if I have all the answers, but I've certainly researched them and bring them up.
What is the difference between air quality versus air conditioning?
So this is why I wanted to stop using the term HVAC.
Okay.
Because that's, it stands for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. What we want to do is provide adequate air exchanges from, in each classroom. At Marston, we do it with unit ventilators that are in the wall in each classroom, the old blowers and the new blowers, which we have at the Center School edition. This building here has a ventilation system. And we're bringing outside air to create, make up air inside that. We're exhausting air, we're off-gassing, and it is withdrawn from the building and new air is brought in from outside. It is also treated for humidity. And we are bringing the humidity levels down to a reasonable level for comfort so that the building isn't like 45% humidity. Sometimes it gets a little higher, a little bit lower. With that said, the gymnasium at this building does not have ventilation nor air conditioning. All the other parts of this building do have dehumidification. We do have air-conditioned auditorium. The difference is the size of the trunks that remove and supply air, the size of the equipment to temper the air and bring it down and cool it. Not only air conditioning works as a form of dehumidification, but it also has extra refrigerant to cool the air down for air conditioning. They are conditioning the air to lower the temperature or to control the temperature. Conditioning could be heat or cooling. We are, in this building, we are heating. We have hydronic heaters that you see along the walls. We at home would call them radiators. That's hydronic. And we have the boilers that make the water that is heated that circulates there. The ventilation system just controls the humidity in the makeup so it's fresh air coming into this building. Same as a unit ventilator in a classroom that has one. We have CO2 sensors in each of those classrooms. And the standard is if we get over 900 parts per billion of CO2, if we're getting too deep in the weeds, just push me back.
Well, I think that people have to understand that you're not asking for $2 million to put air conditioning in the schools.
Absolutely not.
And I think that's what's out there right now, and I don't know if that would be helping us. So we need to find out exactly what this $2 million is, what it will do, and what it will not do.
So what it will do.
Yes.
In the original, in the wing at Center School, will bring proper outside air into the building and remove the air in the building out. So as we all know, that when we sit in a classroom, we're intalating and we're exhaling, and that air gets in there. So we are diluting it with fresh air and removing the stale air on a constant level, at the same time bringing down the humidity to a humidity level that's comfortable for, to our skin and to, you know, human beings that occupy the spaces. There is no cooling going on. Also know, at Center School, in the front building, the oldest building, the top floor, has air conditioning in those classrooms because they get very warm on the shoulder seasons, just like our homes. We just had some, I don't know what the language should be for Indian summer, and I don't mean to offend anybody using that term. But we've had some days that were very hot. And they're, they're in the spring, and they're in the fall because we go from very uncomfortable hot weather into we've got to put our heat on around here. And that's the same in the fall and the spring. We call those shoulder seasons. I do know that when we had summer school and Ken can correct me if he wants to, or even special extended school year program, that this building was very comfortable with the dehumidification operating in this building through that summer extended school year programs. So it does create a more comfortable environment. It is not air conditioning like we know it with central air at home.
Any other questions?
It's not a question, but I anticipate at some point you're going to be explaining this to the Budget Committee.
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay.
Probably even have professionals do it.
Well, might I suggest that your background materials that you gave to us are in a different font? I had a magnifying glass.
You can't read that? I can't either.
No, I could not read it. And what I could read of the sketches, I didn't understand.
Fair enough.
So there you go.
Thank you. No, you make a good point.
Trying to sell it to them.
Yes. We try to fit everything on that eight-and-a-half-by-11 paper and...
Sorry, that's it.
Truly noted. Thank you.
We did, when Mariah and I were at the budget meeting, just so you know, we did, we did kind of lay the groundwork for this, knowing that, you know, this, we've hit some roadblocks. Best intentions, getting the ESER money only to not get the contracts, you know, getting the contracts only to find we hit asbestos. I mean, it has really been, it seems like there's been a lot of barriers and not a lot of wins.
Very discouraging.
Yeah, very discouraging. So we were very upfront with them, and they were fairly supportive, actually. And we know that voters are going to have to make a decision, right? Yeah.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Westside.
Thank you, I appreciate all your support. Thank you.
Now, the school district has to have 25% of their total enrollment qualify for free and reduced hot lunch. Hampton is now at 16%.
Correct.
I have been told by some of the food pantries in town that they have, everyone has seen an influx. They've seen a lot more people.
Awesome.
So please, fill out the free and reduced hot lunch forms. Nobody sees them but Mary.
Very private.
It's very private. It helps us, if we can get 9% more of the total population, we can get free lunch and breakfast for every student.
That's incredible.
And that's what we're trying to do, but it's not easy.
Not easy. But we're trying.
We are trying.
We are trying. Thank you for that.
And there will be, there will be a table at both open houses next week.
Yep, tomorrow, yeah, next week, Hampton Academy. I'll have forms, we'll have information. And any questions needed to be asked, we will answer. So my little update from the last school board meeting, I had, Food Service had three open positions. I have filled two, and I'm thrilled. And I have two interviews at the end of the week, so I think the third one, I'm positive, not positive, but hopeful, I will get the third one filled by the end of this month. So I'll have a full staff. Everything else is, seems okay.
How has the participation in lunch been?
Not great at all. We're down, we're down from last year. We were about 600 lunches a day last year. We're one, two, three, about 475 this year. So September's always a hard month, start of the school year. Kids are figuring it out. The young ones are still bringing their lunches from home and their little lunch boxes. So I'm trying, trying new things, new tasting, trying to get, trying to get the kids to eat. Because we do put out a great healthy lunch. $3.35. You get your entree, two fruits, two vegetables, your milk, and your grains. So you're getting five components for $3.35. And a good meal, I must say. It tastes really good.
Any questions?
All right, thank you.
Those are two new hires?
No, they're not my two new hires, but thank you. Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Those are staff members that are here for their leadership hours for their, yeah, yeah, students. Staff and students, right? I put it together for you. All right.
Dr. Costa, your report.
Yeah. Just a review of some of the things that we've been doing in terms of what's required and making sure we fulfill those requirements with the signs of suicide, which is part of our policy. The other thing is, is that we started in the summer meeting with Hampton Police and Hampton Fire during our retreat, and we continued those conversations on September 27. It was a really great meeting with Chief Reno as well as Chief McMahon. And during that time, we specifically focused on safety protocols, looking at evacuation accountability, reunification. And then, of course, really drilling down and thinking about those roles. And recommendations were made regarding further training. So it was a really good session that the leadership team had with them and the SROs. So that was great. We also hosted a guest teacher orientation. Although that there are 60 guest teachers in our system, many are inactive or work seasonally. So they may work, if they're college students, they may work only when they're home from the college break. Or if they are snowbirds, they may work at the beginning of the year, they take off, and then they come back. So although it seems like a lot, we are still struggling to fill many positions. So something that we've been talking about even as part of the budget process. The Steering Committee met to specifically look at goals in terms of moving from where we were last year to what we need to accomplish this year. Frank DeLuca did sit on those meetings as well as the number of staff, a number of people from our leadership team. I did invite the PTA. And so we were able to make some movement. And I want to, I'll spend some time on those with you and obviously looking for your feedback, wanting to know if you have recommendations, if you have changes. We want to make sure that we're inclusive of the board's input as well. I think, you know, Board Member Frank DeLuca did give us some great feedback, and he was with us, but I want to make sure that it meets everyone's needs. So please feel free to give us any feedback as we go through that in just a bit. We will be talking about the calendar, which is about this time of year, that we do do that. One of the things that we did do is we reached out to SAU 21. And they, because they, their students attend the collaborative, the Seacoast Collaborative, they have to, by state law, align all of their in-service day with all of the high schools that attend the Seacoast Collaborative that... that attend the Seacoast Collaborative, that the Seacoast School of Technology. So we are waiting to hear from them. I did hear that they are shifting some of their in-service days to Friday. That was one of the things I know Exeter is doing. So I'm going to wait, and we're not going to probably be able to make, we'll do a meet and confer with them. And moving on, we have a wellness committee meeting coming up on Thursday, October 26th. Andrea, if you're able to join us, we'd love to have you. We'll be in the community room. Unfortunately, Health Trust is no longer giving flu shots. So therefore, those all have to be done. We're encouraging people to sign up through their PCP or convenient MD so that we can ensure that we get those if staff is so inclined to get a flu shot. Talked a little bit about, the principals talked a little bit about how they are currently really looking at students for the start of the school year, thinking about what their RTI support looks like, looking specifically at the fall data from STAR testing, the DIBELS data, which does fulfill a requirement which we are now required by law to screen for dyslexia. And DIBELS is one of those approved screeners. So we're lucky that we do have that in place already. That's one of the new legislative changes that came out from their work last year. So they're looking at that to determine how we are going to support our kiddos for the first trimester. Obviously, we look, and looking at the New Hampshire SAS from last year, those scores are going to be released shortly. They're just cleaning up the data to ensure that they have the correct data. We've shared it with you.
I think it was released today. I saw it on the news.
Was it today?
Commissioner was talking about them.
Yep. Great, great. And those are, those will be available through a portal. We'll be sure to send those out. But we use that to obviously look at our trends, our patterns, and to inform instructional decision making. And then we have some offerings from New Hampshire ASCD, where Steve Renshur is coming on October 5th, and then Pete DeWitt is coming later, should say later in October. So I don't know what happened there. And then finally, Goal Four, we have changed. That's new on our goals. You'll see that in just a little bit, and you'll see that, just the required training that we had to do at the start of the school year. And then specifically looking at the equity puzzle, one of the things that we are doing this year, which is new, is all students will be screened using a Sabers tool, which is recommended by the state, and it's to really look at how our kids are doing. It does align with the CASL standards. So we're really looking at social behavior, academic behavior, and emotional behavior. And it's looking at what kind of supports will be most appropriate for intervention for our students. That's something that our councils didn't mention, but something that I wanted to mention as part of our multi-tiered system of support that's focused specifically around student behavior. And we'll talk a little bit about that. And that's really it for my report. Questions or comments?
No. As I saw the report on WMUR about the assessments coming out, if I'm remembering correctly, New Hampshire's scores in general were better than the state surrounding states, and which kind of, that didn't surprise me. But what did surprise me was our scores were lower in reading. I thought it would have been math, but it was reading.
Yeah, and we saw that too. Remember when we did our report to you, it was surprising to us that the reading scores weren't as high as they had traditionally been, which I don't know what that means, right? I know that there is a lot of work right now being done on the science of reading. So I think some schools are in a state of flux right now. I know that we in Hampton have always believed in a balanced literacy approach. So in addition to thinking about not just, you know, reading, but also breaking down the components of reading and what do students need in terms of structure, in terms of writing, in terms of speaking, listening, but also some kids do need phonemic awareness. They need a structured way of unlocking the code. And that's, I know, something that Center School continues to focus on as part of their balanced literacy approach. And I know that they've been, they've been right on that.
Were parents made aware of the Sabers tool and what was included in it?
So the Sabers tool is done in-house, and it's not an opt-in. It's not an opt-in. So parents are aware, I'm sure, because they know that we've always been looking at the social emotional well-being of our students. Anything that we have our students participate in has to be an opt-in.
So they were aware of the questions that were on this Sabers tool?
Yeah. No.
It's not a student survey?
It's teachers do it on their students.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Well, it said all students will be screened using the Sabers tool. So that's what made me think students were having it, but okay.
Teachers, teachers do the screenings.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yep. It's okay. Yeah, and that's kind of the, that's what's tricky right now. Even with the OVAIIS survey, is that you have to have an opt-in for any, any kind of a survey right now does require the opt-in, which you saw with the My Voice, which, you know, it'll be curious to see what percentage we get in terms of participation. But that's...
Yes. No, I thought the same thing.
I can talk about that. Yep. Which is what we've historically done, Andrea. Yep.
Questions? On to goals.
So we, we obviously, we have some work to do under all of those goals, but we're always open to your feedback. But what we did was we do an audit of what have we done? And then what do we want to do moving forward? So under the first goal, which is really around communication, we specifically, I'm going to focus on the green highlights because I think that's, that's what's new, right? So one of the things that we really want to do is we do want to hear from our parents in terms of the My Voice. We want to know, we want to have their feedback. We're hoping that there will be enough of a participation that we will be able to draw some conclusions, set some goals. So there's, there's that that's there. And then you can see that we are looking at Alma as it specifically relates to internet security and confidentiality. There are some new laws and some new procedures and guidelines that we want to make sure that our student information system is doing what we need it to do, and that we are being mindful of the security issues that it presents. So we, Amber has flagged that for us, Amber Levine. And then you'll see that it was important to ensure that we are maintaining our communication, vertical teaming with SAU 21 and Sacred Heart. So that was highlighted, and that was brought forward. And then you can see that N4911 is specifically something that we were hoping to do last year, but unfortunately, there were many glitches with the municipal system, and then there was glitches with our system. But I'm told that we're, got the green light, and we're ready to move forward in terms of a way of implementing that in our district. So we're looking forward to that. You see that we have down there My Voice for staff and students. Patrice Baker, who is now our early invention outreach worker, we're working with her, and she is working with Center School. She's coming up with parent series where she'll be working with our youngest children, those zero to four-year-olds. So Patrice Baker is on there. You see that specifically around safety and parents, one of the things that we want to really bring to the attention of our parents are the concerns around social media. And one of the calls that I was on with the Department of Justice in DC is around what's happening with children, youth on specifically social media. So that's something that we were talking about. And one of the pieces that came out of communication was the need to reestablish those vertical teams. So that's something that we want to do during in-service days, if possible, which is why it's going to be important that our SAU 21 in-service days are aligned so that we can continue to have that. There is a need for student leadership, something that we haven't had since pre-COVID. So that's on there in terms of how can we give our kids a voice. That's something that we want to increase. And we talked specifically around a flow chart for communication and terms of how that works. That was talked about at our leadership retreat. You know, who do you go to, when, where? So that's something that we've talked about that was in our handbook. One of the things that came out in our work sessions was cell committees by school. So something that we want to integrate, whether it's part of a, you know, school climate committee, or it's part of something else, but cell committees by school, we thought would be important to do, giving all the things that our mental health team spoke about. And then, of course, we talked about mentors for students, but specifically around what it's going to look like at the middle school. So that's there in green, and we have some options there, and that has yet to be fleshed out. And then under school safety, you see that those were the recommendations that came forward for further training from Chief Reno and Chief McMahon. And then, of course, under behavior response training, you can see some other things that came out of that in terms of how we might be able to ensure that we are meeting the needs of our students in terms of some of the dysregulation that we're seeing and how we can meet their needs. The mental health team spoke about a parent series, which is the parent partnership. So that's why that's there in green, and how we can maybe continue to reach out to our parents to ensure that we are having those connections. We know that parents need some support, and we want to be able to do that. And then internet safety, speaking even further about that based on what we're seeing, what we know. And and then under curriculum and professional practice, looking specifically at those assessments that will align with the curriculum, and then the universal screeners, K-8, we want to make sure those are in place. Some of the work that we have spoke, that we started last year was really looking at district RTI systems. And though we recognize our schools are different in terms of developmentally, our youngest learners are very different than our middle school learners, but what we'd like to see is some of those through lines that run through those RTI systems, pre-K to grade eight. So that's something that we want to continue to work on. And then you see that Hampton Academy has asked for training as it relates to their curriculum work. And you notice that anything in green is a focus that is specifically related to curriculum in English Language Arts, and then, of course, with mathematics. One of the things that came out of the legislative session was cursive mandate, which we are covered. So fortunately, that doesn't mean a big change for us because we're already there. But something that we want to make sure that we're being mindful of is this ChatGPT, right? So that's on our, that's on our radar. We know that it's here. How are we, how are we going to educate our staff on that? How are we going to, that's going to become part of our students' vernacular? How do we integrate that, right? And then looking at math, you can see that there's going to be a concentrated effort, really looking at developing those sequence and alignment of methods and materials and assessments, K-8. We were specifically focused last year on the middle school, but we really need to roll that down into the K-5. And then, of course, determining if there's professional development that might be needed to support our educators and support staff. And then the last goal is specifically around equity, and we're looking at equity for all. And one of the pieces that has come out of legislation is the translation of required documents for compliance. So that's something that we are looking at. So I see that I've got a nod in the, a thumbs up, and we, and of course, we want to make sure we do that. And then, of course, that district RTI model that we spoke about. And then, one of the things that came, that's come to our attention is we have some really great programs at Center School with our NEC program, and then we have some great programming at Hampton Academy and with our experiential learning program and our Aspire program. But what seems to be missing right now is Marston School. And we had, we're looking at that. What does that look like for Marston? So that's on there. And then the Sabers tool, which I had mentioned, and I'm happy to share that with you, Andrea, or anyone for that matter. And then what will happen is once you give me your feedback that we can add to this, we're happy to make any changes to support the work that we want to do. The principals will be building their goals off of that, that will align with what we want to do. So obviously, I want to make sure that we, we hear from you as well. But that was the work that we had done. And like I said, that was pretty comprehensive process. But open, open for questions or comments?
Last.
This is a work in progress.
Absolutely.
You know, I go back to SMART goals.
Yep.
Specific, measurable, and so on and so forth. I can't remember the rest of the acronym.
But you did pretty well.
Yeah, there you go. I got two, two out of five. But some of these, when I look at the outcomes, there's, and maybe some of them you can't, but some of them I think you can. Some of them are measurable.
Yes.
And that's the piece that I'm not seeing in much of this document.
So this is, so this is what we do, is this is a document that is in draft form. And what I will do is once, you know, you say, this is, this is where we want to go, this looks about right, our next step is, is what we do as a leadership team, is then we start fleshing out, even we'll start drilling down with, you know, you know, measures of success, you know. Obviously, the goals are, a lot of times is...
I get that.
Yeah.
But some, some of them, I think, could be measured. Some of them, you know, somewhere in here, I saw it, based on behavioral data.
Yeah, we could definitely measure that one.
Okay. I'm guessing that's for behavioral data.
It would be any kind, yeah.
Or positive, or whatever.
Infractions or, yeah, absolutely.
But that's my, when I saw it, that's what jumped up at me.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, I appreciate that. And I can, I, we can certainly, we can go through and we can definitely measure it. I know that we do track it in Alma, and I know that the assistant principals are, as they're shaking their head, I'm sure, that's something that they do. And I think that it's a, it's a great point. Are we moving in the right direction?
Some of them I think would be very hard to measure, other than anecdotal, whatever. But that's fine.
Well, I think, yeah, I think that what I really, so depending on which one it is, like with our curriculum documents, like the goal is to have some working curriculum documents that we haven't had for a while. The stuff with, under safety, like the goal is to make sure that we're trained. The goal is to make sure we have plans. But I, but I agree, there's, there's room for, and I'd be happy to take your feedback and incorporate that. That's why it's a draft. It's up for your input.
I think when looking at outcomes, I think there are some formatting issues on the document, and that might help a little bit. So for instance, if you look under curriculum, you'll see under person responsible, we have basically three blanks. The person who is responsible is administration, staff. That's all kind of in the far right column, which is where the outcomes are supposed to be. So I have a feeling they got, some of the outcomes got bumped off and aren't here.
Yeah, and when you go from Google.
And that's formatting, yeah.
And we go from a Google document, and Amber and I have been fighting with this because we use a Google document. this because we use a Google document, but I download it into a Word document because I start to clean it up. That's where, yep, but I appreciate it. Yep, I get it. That's the beast.
Andrea?
Do we have someone in the ZOR room here at Hampton Academy?
Well, no, we do not. We were, do you want to, do you want to?
No, I just wanted to know.
There's 11 pages of goals. How many of these goals can we actually do, as well as plan the socially emotional learning, supervise the one teacher? Do everything else that you have to do in administration? Do everything you have to do in teaching? I think you have wonderful goals, but I think they need to be fewer in, because I don't see, I don't want to sit here at the end of the year saying, what did we do? I think you're overachieving here. I mean, if you complete, if you have, say, three goals and you complete them, isn't that better than having all of these goals and then saying, well, we did this, but we didn't do that?
It's a point well taken, but these are all things that we've been working on. In fact, you know, there's a fine line between being redundant and yet growing. So I think what we're trying to do is, you know, we're trying to press forward, and we are trying to continue to grow what we're doing. I think that, you know, when I sat with admin, we felt like it was, given the many people we have to do this, it's not going to fall on any one person, it's going to fall on a team, right? A team of 12. And I think that if everyone does a little, it amounts to a lot. And I do think that we have to see where we land, even with the curriculum work. We have to see, you know, one of the things that we talk about is that we would rather do fewer things and do them well, which is why with curriculum, we've taken a little longer on language arts and math than maybe we have in the past. But I think it's because it's really important at the end that we have quality, something quality that we can really use and we can, we can give to somebody. Like, we can say, these are our curriculum documents. When a new staff comes in and they say, what do we teach? We have quality documents and maps that make sense. So I do think that we can certainly go back and we can prioritize, but these are all, like, I wouldn't know which one to cut out. I mean, communication, we're always going to do, we're always going to focus on safety, physical and emotional safety, and we're always going to focus on curriculum, and we have to focus on equity. So the four goals have to be, right? It's just school, it's just the work that we do on a daily basis. I agree that we could, but I do think that these are things that we have teams that we are working with as well, so that no one person is bearing this alone.
Well, I know, these goals are only one part of the job. And from what I understand, each school has its own unique and, unique and different things that they're working on that are equally as important as these goals. And they need to solve those issues as well as the goal issues. So I think somewhere we have to come up with a happy medium, but I just don't want somebody to get so overwhelmed that we lose sight of everything. Because it's, right now, education is not something people are dying to get into. In fact, some are dying, not dying to get out, but are leaving. And I just think that we need to do the goals, but maybe not all of the goals. And also to work on the other issues that we have to work on. The silence came up. We'll move on to Mariah and her...
If you, if you want to, again, if you want to give me, you want to write on it and write all over it and give it to me and prioritize it, absolutely.
Well, Mariah, now you're going to tell us how much money we don't have.
Well, with that said, I've, we started putting purchase orders in, but not all purchase orders are in tuitions, and the transportation for those tuitions are trickling in, so we'll get blanket purchase orders for those in soon. Most of our utility purchase orders, blanket purchase orders are in, so that's encumbered already. Majority of the supplies have already been ordered and paid for the, because the secretaries take their chunk of budget, do a huge order at the beginning of the year, and then trickle down in the middle of the year, and then see where they're at around the holidays, Christmas, vacation. So those major things have been put in the budget. So we have a good chunk of the budget encumbered right now. So it's looking pretty good. It's just trying to get the rest of the tuition for the out-of-justice students that have trickled in and figure out where we're at for that. So we're working on that piece of it. The grants ended, there's at least four of them that ended in September. They will be reported on next week. So next month, you'll see a lot have been closed. And then a few, Title I has been completed, Title II has been completed, and IDA has been completed. We're just waiting for approvals on those. So I've slowly been giving you the new grant breakdowns on what we have encumbered for the grants for this year. Food service program is up and running. We, it takes a couple months for the state to approve our free and reduced program. We have to send them a bunch of documents that has yet to been finalized. So once that happens, their revenue will be put into the system, but we have not seen that yet. So September and Octobers and August. We ha, I gave you a copy of the MS 24 for 2023. That's the guesstimated revenues that I give to the revenue department to help offset taxes when they're setting the tax rates. They have not responded yet. Sometimes they'll call, and if they have a final number for CatAid, because right now it's a guesstimate for me, they'll call with that information. Or if they know of any other revenue sources that I may not know of prior, they'll contact me, but I have not heard from them yet. So right now, this is our final numbers for our revenue sources coming in from my guesstimate. And then the GMR came in for our health insurance from Health Trust. It is 14.2%. And dental GMR is 4.7. The dental 4.7 is across the board for anybody at Health Trust. That's the same for anybody that has dental. They're getting a 4.7 increase. The GMR for health insurance is anywhere between 9% and 28%. So we're kind of smack dab in the middle of that percentage range. I went, I think it was last, no, it was two weeks ago, to Health Trust to have them explain why the percentages have gone up. And two years ago, not 20, not this past year, we did not get a surplus of funds. But two years prior, when we were in COVID, we got surplus of funds of money back that we got to distribute between the district receiving the money back and the employees. That being said, that money is because they didn't have the, they didn't spend all the money they estimated. So the costs and all the expenses and surgeries came lower than they expected. Last year, all of a sudden, it went 50 to 60% in two months, higher than the prior year. So they had to go into their surplus money, which is, they try to keep at 90 million. That went down. So there's not only trying to fill the surplus back up, but they're also guesstimating where they're at, of where the expenses are going to be for next year. And it's just gone, it's just gone up between cost of, you know, inflation going up, and then everybody going back to having surgeries, medications, being through the roof and all that, the cost has just gone. I, they said that they are welcome to come and talk on it. I have the union agreement next year, and at that point, I was going to look anyway at other health insurances. But talking to the human resource group that we have through all the schools, it's at all health insurances right now, unfortunately. And the problem with changing health insurances to try to get it lower is you get it lower for the first two years, and then it goes up. So it's like that, so sometimes it's better off trying to ride the waves and see where we land. But I will get that information for, when we go into negotiations. I thought 14.2% was, I almost fell off my chair when they told me. But then hearing everybody else that have 25 to 28%, I'm, I'm like, well, I'll take the 14%.
I can remember we had 23 and 24 and 25 way back when.
I, yeah.
So I, it didn't shock me that it was 14. What was it last year, eight?
It was seven. And then the years prior, we've had, like, there were two or three years that we didn't have an increase at all.
You have to, or we have to, we have to negotiate a change in plans with the association.
Yes. So that's coming up next year. Yep. So because they're getting, this is another thing that Health Trust is doing, we have Blue Choice, and it's, they called the Cadillac Plan.
They used to.
Used, right? They, that is going away next year, completely going away. So when we negotiate, we're going to be negotiating not only costs, but plans and everything. So I'll be looking at all of that coming up, yep. Yep, so I wanted to give you that information. And then my last thing that I have is, when we got audited, the auditors suggested that our treasurer had, would have a deputy. Our treasurer did not have a deputy for the school, but a couple of years ago got one for the town. And so I reached out to Ellen Lavin and asked if she could appoint a deputy. And because I couldn't, it has to be somebody that would work with her, that would have all her information, so if she, something happened to her, they could sign the documents.
So has this person agreed to do it?
This person agreed to do it, yes.
So you need a motion?
Yep, I just need...
A vote.
A vote.
I'll nominate Kathleen Estes as deputy school treasurer. Second discussion, well, that's you.
Any discussion? Thank you. No discussion? All those in favor?
Great, thank you. So that takes one thing off my list. And then we already went over the CIP. I have any backup, if anyone wants to talk to me about it or really see more, see the RFPs that we sent out, or come in and see the big documents that we did, or have any questions, please come in.
So the teachers' raise for next year is how much?
The teachers' contract raise? I don't know the exact percentage, but I want to say it's around six.
Which leads me to another question to piggyback on to...
I can, let me pull their contract.
Oh, no, let's say we'll use six. So we're already there, 8% behind the ball. The increase in insurance.
Oh, yeah.
The budget books coming out?
Soon.
So my goal is, we have another meeting with the leadership next week. As soon as that's completed and I get the rest of the numbers in, I should have it by the end of next week, because we're meeting on Tuesday. I just need at least a good, solid day to print them out and put them together.
Okay.
But I will, so I also emailed you at the beginning of the meeting with the updated budget calendar that I had sent Wendy when she wasn't here to just let her know what days we're having. I updated the calendar. So I sent it to everybody. So if you don't get them, let me know, so I know it's an email thing. I sent the emails out individually, not as a group, because you can do school board, you can type in school board, and it's supposed to connect all of you. Instead of doing that, I did it individually, so just let me know if it is a wonky thing. So that's, I sent you that updated calendar. But I will email you to let you know the books are done, and if you need me to drop them off, let me know. I don't mind doing that either. But it should be hopefully...
Let us know if you get it or don't.
Next Friday.
Yeah, I will.
Yeah.
I'm usually on about 6:00 AM.
You don't have any idea then what you're looking at as a range for, or increase in the budget?
Right now? No. I ju, I started, I did the teachers, I got all that information together. I just got the health insurance, so I have to put that in. We were just, majority of it's done. There's a couple little things that I need to go through before I get it, but it's, it's not going, it's going to be higher than last year for sure.
Well, and remember, you're also asking the public for a $2 million air quality.
Mm-hmm.
And we're also asking for probably the special ed money.
The special ed money is definitely, that is something that is not in control this year because we didn't expect all the students that we got. And we're working through that right now. It's going to be a tough year in my budget this year.
Is your budget already frozen?
Not yet. Not yet.
But you anticipate pretty soon.
Well, once I get all the final numbers for tuitions, like I said, for special ed, it'll give me a better idea where we're at, because I can stick, once we know how much it's going to be a month for some of the students, we do it for the rest of the year, and then we encumber it, and then I can really see where we're at. And we don't have all the numbers yet for that.
Any other questions? On to policies. Personnel, we have an issue, but you want to discuss that in, on public first, before we make an emotion, or are you ready to make an?
Why don't we do the policies first? That's my suggestion. Just get them done. I don't think, they're all second reads, correct?
Yeah, except for the GBEA, there was a recommendation to add the language in red to this policy based on our district attorney.
That's a first read.
That's a first read. That's the only one, so GBEA.
I did have a language change, just one word. Well, I had two things. First is, so, sorry. Do we want to go ahead and do the second reads and then look at this one?
Yeah, I would prefer to.
Yeah, sorry.
You want to take all the second reads together?
I would. I would make a motion that we accept all the second reads on the agenda.
Second.
Second, Wendy?
Been made and seconded to accept all the second reads on the agenda? All those in favor? Now, which one do you want to talk about, Wendy?
GBEA, staff ethics.
GBEA, okay.
First is just, it's just a language thing. So on the very first paragraph, it says adhere to the standards enunciated in the policy. Enunciated is an incorrect word. That's when you, that's when you say something out loud correctly.
All right, I'll get the language.
Detailed, described, articulated. It's, the idea is fine, it's just, we just need a different word there, that's all. And I think we should...
Even if it's just outlined in the policy.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. I do think we should talk a little bit on the second page. Exhibit professional conduct both on and off of duty. Not saying we have to strike it, but I definitely think it's something that we should talk about, because we are...
Which paragraph are you looking at?
So on the, on the second page.
Yep.
There's added, it says exhibit professional conduct, and then the text has been added both on and off of duty. That's, that's a discussion.
Yeah, remember when we did that? I think we were trying, the spirit was to, so we may have, right?
Yep, but we may want to make that a little, that's, that's a pretty vague statement. Who determines what is professional conduct? If I decide to dress up in a clown suit and ghosting through the middle of town, that is not professional. And can I be fired for that? And who decides that? I know that was not the point of what we were looking at, so we might want different language for that. language for that.
So did you have any suggestions for that, Wendy? Or you just think we ought to think about that?
I think we ought to. I'm curious if anybody else has any opinions about it, any thoughts about language.
You're looking at the fourth paragraph?
So under, on page two, so this is the back.
Yeah, I'm on the back.
Yep, right here, where it says both on and off of duty. It is the off of duty I'm a little concerned about. Exhibit professional conduct both on and off of duty. Is there no time when our employees can be non-professional? When they are at home, when they are with their families?
What if we don't specify? What if we just say exhibit?
Right, that's, yeah.
That would be my recommendation.
Yes.
Yep, I don't think we need to...
I agree.
So you're striking that red section?
I'm fine with everything else.
Yep, I think it doesn't make it as gray.
Correct.
Right.
So this is a first read?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't need to do anything with it?
Now have...
The ethics, we just sign it every year. If you want to just, that last page, we do it annually. If you want to sign it, you just give it to me, and we'll get Frank's when he gets back. It's page two, she made it real easy for you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Minutes of September 12th. Any errors or omissions?
I didn't see any. I would move them for discussion.
Okay, second?
I have a question. I feel like in the past, when we have, so keeping in mind, I wasn't here last time, when we've had someone come in and make a statement during public comment, I thought we usually put their name.
You.
So under public comment, we have a resident raised a concern?
It mentions his name later.
I'm...
Where?
I'm not sure. We got his name.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, that, you're right.
I'm not sure.
That's somebody covering.
I don't think he gave us his name.
Oh, okay.
It was an interesting, yeah.
We're still in public.
Okay, that's fine. So I guess second piece is we should make sure when someone comes in, if they want to make public comment, they need to give their name and state whether they're a resident of the town or not, their address, yeah.
I think, Ginny, that we can't vote on these. She wasn't here.
You don't have a quorum.
Yeah, and she wasn't, we'll have to postpone these till our next meeting.
And then probably that, too.
Yeah, same thing. You'll need a quorum for that, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
So...
I'll keep these.
Yep.
And non-public also?
Non-public what?
Minutes?
Yes.
We will postpone?
Yeah, till Frank.
All right.
Do you have a resignation letter? Does anyone want to talk about that in non-public? Or is everyone all set with going forward?
Can we talk about it in public? Because if we can, we probably should. Or if you'd rather not, we can do it in non-public.
I think, I think it gets tricky because of the, right? I would recommend going into non-public and then come out and...
I would make a motion that we go into non-public under RSA 93...
Yeah.
Dash, CE dash.
Et cetera, et cetera.
91A32.
91A3, Roman numeral 2A.
Hey, okay.
Yes, yes.
Non-public, I will let them know.